Meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(noise) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, due to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with origin and justice for all.
I would like to introduce Jamie Northman, Mattson Insurance.
Sorry.
She's going to discuss our insurance renewal.
Hello. So we're with the Mattson Insurance Agency. We've been insuring round and township since 2014. Our insurance proposal, we're keeping it with the same carrier that it's been with in the last few years and that's McKee Risk. And it's actually through, the carrier is actually National Fire Insurance Company of Hartford. Okay? So if you flip through to page two, we're going to start off with the claim summary. Okay, to go back through. And this is going to be something, a topic of discussion that was upcoming here. You can see in 2000, I know that you haven't really had anything this past year, but in 2014, there were some claims and they're still open. The one that is open, it's on the public official liability. And this is the one with Seneca Resources, which I'm sure you guys are aware of. It is now up to that value where it says total incurred. It's still open and could go higher than that. Have you guys heard anything from Seneca?
No.
Okay. How about, is everything going okay with the claims adjuster? Do you guys have any problems there?
Just been, not at all.
Just been in contact, okay? So we've been keeping a close eye on that one. Obviously, we hope it's not going to go any bigger than that. Then the other one is the auto. That was an auto claim back in 2014. I think that one was actually in 2015. It was the 1415 policy term. But we were rear-ended, so it's just going to be, well, you guys were, one of our insurers were rear-ended. So it should be separated.
Anyhow, that here is a high claims year and that drives, that ends up driving your premium, especially the Seneca Resources claim that is still open, that's going to affect you until it gets closed out. So we will discuss that in detail.
Okay, if we flip to page three, it's going to start us on the property. Property portion of the policy. It's on a special form and we have it insured on a blanket. So what the blanket does, it's going to give you additional coverage. So you see that limit of 622,000 or 622,500, that's going to be the underlying buildings and contents limits, the total for all of the underlying buildings and contents. So what the blanket does, if you need to move things from this building to one of your other locations, those contents will automatically be covered if there's a fire at that location. Okay? If you didn't have a blanket limit, that would not be covered. And then you'd have to readjust your contents limit every time. Another good thing about a blanket is, say for instance, this voting that's insured at 329,000, if it were to burn to the ground and the true re-voting is, say, 350,000, it's going to give you that additional to bring it back to the true replacement cost. Okay? So that's the beauty of the blanket. You also have business income, which generally you may need, you may not need. But if this voting were to burn to the ground, that additional 100,000 for business income, it's going to pay for ongoing expenses while you're re-voting. It's going to pay to keep employees on staff, things along those lines, any ongoing expenses.
But if you see the blanket limit at the 622,500, like Jamie had indicated earlier, if you go down to the township garage in the fire hall, you add those together in the office, that'll equal your 622,000 up top. That's just breaking them down.
Yeah. And then as far as the contents go, that's kind of up to you guys to determine what you have in your buildings, the values and what you need to be insured at. That's something that we can't determine. We can help determine the buildings, but not the contents.
So for this office, you have 15,000. It would cover your computer, the chairs in here, the filing cabinets, things along those lines. The contents in the garage, that could be trickier because you have an inland marine policy that covers your tools already and an auto policy that covers your vehicles. So you have 50,000 on that garage, so I don't know if that limit is adequate for you guys or if it's a little high. You'd have to look into that yourselves.
And then at the time of loss, there's going to be a thousand dollar deductible that would apply. And everything is on replacement costs like we indicated. With McKee, with National Fire Insurance or McKee Risk, they include a property enhancement form.
That's on page four.
Which is on page four. And it's going to give you a bunch of additional coverages. Some will apply to you, some won't. They all come in the same form, so they can't be removed. But the ones that we like to indicate to you that we feel is important for our municipalities are the ordinance or law coverage. It's automatically included. It's going to give you a limit up to your voting limit. So if this voting would burn to the ground and in today's standards, to bring it to code, maybe you have to follow new ADA requirements or the code now requires that the voting must be sprinkler. That's not going to be covered under your typical property policy. So they're going to give you additional coverage for those items that is not required under the code. And then demolition cost. If only, say, 51% of this voting was damaged at the time of loss, of course, to rebuild, you're going to have to demolish the other portion to rebuild. Well, of course, that costs additional premium, so they're going to give you up to a $500,000 limit to do that. And then also to haul all of the debris away as well.
Yeah, and that's at the top. It says 300,000 for debris removal because that's not included in your property policy either. So that would give you 300,000 extra to properly haul away the debris from a fire or tornado or whatever happened to the building.
And then there's just some additional, another nice one to have is the backup sewer and drains. That's not covered under a typical property policy either. The backup sewer drains, any water that's coming through a drain and damages any portion of the voting, you're going to have up to a $25,000 limit to have remediation company come in and do the cleanup for you.
It's nice because when those events happen, it usually costs a couple thousand dollars at least to get Servpro or someone like that in to clean up the mess.
And those are some of the key ones on this page that would pertain to the township. The next page, which is page five, it continues with the enhancement. It's going to give you some property and transit coverage, extended business income. You have up to 365 days, as I said, if you need it while re-voting. You're going to have equipment breakdown coverage. That's going to be any accidental or sudden occurrence to a heating or cooling system. So for example, lightning strikes that hits your air conditioning unit that might be on the roof and it pours water in here, the air conditioning system damages, you know, does damage to the voting. That's not going to be covered under your typical property policy. It's going to be covered under this portion. Okay?
That does not cover maintenance issues. It's only a sudden or accidental event like arcing or lightning as Jamie had indicated.
On page six, it's still part of the enhancement form because National Fire does give you a lot of different additional enhancements. You're going to see newly acquired or constructed buildings. If you guys go to build constructed voting, it's automatically going to give you a $2 million limit. Okay? So that would be already provided in your policy along with business personal property. So if you have any contents in that voting while under construction. A lot of times, a contractor will carry a voter's risk policy, but it's nice to know that you do have coverage in place. And this is even if you purchase a voting. They're going to give you coverage for any restoration of electronic data, valuable papers, if it's damaged at the time of loss. Property off-premise, if you're keeping it in a temporary location, they're going to give you some additional coverage as well. Employee theft, you're going to have a limit up to 25,000 that's voted into this policy. So most townships, boroughs, they don't keep very much money on premise, but if you do happen to have some, it's going to give you up to that $25,000 limit.
And that includes any sort of theft too, it's just not, not just money, it would be any sort of theft.
Page seven is co-insurance. We can skip this page because you guys are insured on a blanket, but we've sticked this in all of our proposals. Insurance carriers want you to be insured at least 80% to the true replacement cost value of the voting. Not market value, but the replacement cost value. So in this example, with the voting's, the true replacement's 100,000, they want you to carry at least $80,000. Because where you would be hurt at the time of loss is if it's a partial loss and it's 30,000 to repair that damage and you're underinsured, you're under this 80%, you may only get 10,000 for that. And that's something that we can take a look at if you're voting, and I know that we have in the past, to make sure that they're insured to value. National Fire includes boiler and machinery. This is on page eight. This is going to be for any, do you guys have boilers in any of your buildings for heat?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. So this is going to include up to a $712,000 limit.
That's your voting and your contents added together, so it'll cover up to the value if the boiler blows the top off the building or whatever.
All right.
Yeah.
You've seen that happen before.
It's going to give you additional business income on this page. Because the business income from the property won't apply, it's now going to be under this boiler and machinery coverage. Same with the ordinance or law and air and emissions. Page nine starts with the equipment floater. This is going to be any of your small tools and any of the scheduled items that we have on the next page. This is on an actual cash value basis, which means it's replacement cost less depreciation. So just like your vehicle, once you drive it off to the lot, it depreciates in value. The equipment does as well.
That's why whenever we get to page 10, we'll take a look through it with you folks and even after we leave today, you take a look through those items and see if they're worth that in today's dollars. Because should they not be, should you suffer a full loss on one of those pieces and you're insuring it for 10,000 and it's only worth $4,000 today, you will only receive that $4,000 in the event of a loss.
So there's no reason to over-insure it?
Because in the, in the long run, you're just paying an extra premium for those values and then you wouldn't get it in the event of a loss.
So there is a thousand dollar deductible at the time of loss. The miscellaneous property, which is the unscheduled equipment, this is going to be for any of the small tools, anything that you can fit into a toolbox. So you have a value right now of 10,000. If you feel like that needs to be higher, we can increase that. But it's going, it's typically anything that's valued at $1,000 or less. Chainsaws, shovels, hammers, anything like that. If there are tools that are in the voting that do not leave the voting, that are valued at $1,000 or less, they can be considered to be contents. So if it burns, I mean, they can be contents, they can be tools, it's up to you.
But what happens in the event of this loss? Say miscellaneous property, $10,000. Say you have a toolbox in the truck, you're at a job site and someone lifts the toolbox off the truck, takes everything inside. You are required as an insurer, as are insured, to provide an inventory list to the carrier of everything that was inside that toolbox. So even though it's not scheduled, we advise all of our people that we insure to please at least take a picture, snapshot of whatever those small tools are, just so that you can prove what was lost in the event that it gets stolen, caught on fire, whatever happens to it, that you can recoup your loss.
And as I said, with the contents, if you do consider them to be contents, the reason why we put this limit on an equipment floater is the contents only goes, it's only 1,000 feet from the premise. Once it leaves this premise, it's no longer content. It needs to be insured on the inland marine. So if you flip to page 10, this is going to be the scheduled equipment list that we have on file. And the values are listed beside. The ones that are included, these are just attachments that go on to the other pieces.
But like I had said on the previous page, the items that say amount of insurance, 40,000 on down the page, if they're not worth that anymore, please let us know so that we can depreciate that for you, so you're not paying an additional premium dollars. Even if it's saving you 50 bucks off your bottom line, please do so because any amount of savings is worth it to you.
Yeah. Page 11 starts with the commercial general liability. This is going to provide two different types of liability for the township. It's going to be premise liability and it's going to be completed operations liability. So the premise liability, if a, when people come to play on the playground, somebody gets injured, you have what is called a goodwill coverage and that's the medical expense limit. Your insurance carrier urges you to turn those claims in, it's going to automatically pay out that 5,000 to try to settle that claim before it actually becomes a potential lawsuit. Okay?
The insurance company would rather pay that out than have the parent sue you in the event that you wouldn't try to get that settled underneath that $5,000. Do you folks have a sign out there that says like, play at your own risk or something like that?
No, no.
That's kind of a deterrent too, because you hear nowadays, like, people go to the playgrounds with their kiddos, then mom and dad's on their cellphone playing video games or whatever, not watching their kid, and the kid gets hurt because the parent's not paying attention. Still your liability. So that kind of could be a deterrent as well, even though you'd probably be brought into a lawsuit anyhow, it's kind of a deterrent.
Right.
But even, I mean, it's going to also provide the premise of if somebody slips and falls on your property, things along those lines. And you do have up to that $1 million per occurrence limit and you have a $3 million general aggregate limit. What the general aggregate is, is you can potentially have three $1 million claims throughout the year. Okay?
But she was also talking about your product and if you did roadwork and it was deemed not adequate and someone got hurt from not filling a pothole properly or something like that and then they sued the township back, it would cover that as well.
Yeah. The next is employee benefits liability. You have up to a $1 million per occurrence and aggregate limit, less a $1,000 deductible at the time of loss. What this is going to be for is if you hire a new employee, you advise that employee that they should have health insurance in place by July 1st. They get sick, go to the doctor on July 7th, there's, they were never added, it's going to be negligence on the township's part, that employee forms a lawsuit against the township for their negligence in not adding them. This is, this is the part of the policy that will pay out.
It would cover any sort of mistake on any kind of benefit, not just the health insurance, anything like if you failed to add them on to 401K, disability, anything like that, it would cover the mistake made by the township. If you, if you forgot to put them on the roster, on the census, or else if they got lost in cyberspace, which things do now, it would cover that lawsuit from the employee.
And down below, you're going to see the schedule of exposures. Every year, we ask for the new adopted budget and that's how the insurance carrier rates the general liability. It's based off of your expenditures. Page 12 is the boilerplate page that we stick into all of our proposals. Pollution is always automatically excluded on every general liability policy unless purchased back. If you guys ever feel the need for pollution coverage, of course, we can offer it and provide a quote, but at this time, it is excluded. If you use any subcontractors, say for paving jobs or excavation work, things along those lines, make sure you get a certificate of insurance to keep in the file. And we always advise our customers, try to make sure that they have the same liability limits that you have. Because we do see where if you were to hire a subcontractor that only has a $500,000 limit, they get, their work is faulty. They, their liability is exhausted at the 500,000 limit, it then reverts to your policy. So it's important to make sure that you have the same limits.
Also, we're not a handshake society, so if they don't have any insurance or they can't provide it, then don't hire them because we don't do business like that anymore. And you do get audited on those certificates of insurance from the insurance carrier every year. So it's, it's in your best interest to have those.
Page 13 is probably the most important part of your policy. This is going to be the public official liability and employment practice liability. Public official liability is going to protect the supervisors and the board, anybody making decisions on behalf of the township. So if a group of taxpayers get together, form a lawsuit against the township for misappropriation of funds or for something else, this is the part of the policy that's going to provide the defense coverage for you. Whether, you know, you guys are right, wrong, or indifferent, this is the part that pays out. You're going to have a million dollar aggregate limit and a million dollar aggregate, a million dollar claims limit and a million dollar per aggregate limit. And it's full prior act, so if there's claims that arise back to township first started, this policy will pay out on defense, less your $1,000 deductible. Employment practice liability is going to provide protection for the township if an employee would file a lawsuit for wrongful termination, sexual harassment, age discrimination, things along those lines. And you have the million dollar limits for this coverage as well, with the full prior acts, less a $1,000 deductible. Page 14 is the auto. You have a million dollar liability limit. We're keeping these, these limits all the same, there's no changes. You have a 10,000 medical expense, which really isn't going to apply to you guys because if somebody's injured, it's going to be a workforce compensation claim. The uninsured, underinsured motorist, you have a million dollar limits. This is going to provide coverage if somebody hits you and they have either no insurance coverage or very low limits of coverage. You can come back and sue your own policy for punitive damage.
You can't get something from someone that doesn't have anything. The insurance company's very sympathetic to that. They don't charge a lot of money for these coverages and it's nice to know that you can get money from somewhere if you be injured.
And then it does also provide the higher non-owned liability. What this is, is if the township ever needs to rent a vehicle, say you guys are going to a conference somewhere and you want to rent a vehicle, it will automatically apply the liability coverage to it. You can just give us a call, we'll send a certificate of insurance to the place that you're renting a vehicle and then you should be good to go. The non-owned liability portion of this is going to be, say, if Chrissy ever takes her vehicle to run errands, go to the bank on behalf of the township or go to the post office. Her personal auto policy is going to be primary if she's in an accident. Once those limits are exhausted, because it's typically less, her limits are lower than the township, what the townships is, is going to be, then it reverts the township million dollar policy. Okay? And that's for anybody that's driving their own.
That's pretty prevalent. We put it on everybody that has a business policy because I rented my own car here today to Kane from Brookville. I mean, that happens and that's a non-owned liability.
Page 15 is the schedule of vehicles that we have on file. I know last year, we increased all of the deductibles on the comprehensive and collision to 2,500 for some savings. I know a lot of times with townships and boroughs, you guys do the rest of the maintenance on your vehicles, you can do small repairs, things like that. So that was a small benefit to you for doing that last year. You also see the backups listed on here. This is going to, it's the one that has the SME plate that can run on the roads.
And that would cover the liability on there?
And then with National Fire, they do have driver standards and we did include them on this page. So that's just something to keep in mind if you're going to be hiring a new employee. Just kind of flip back to this page and review it for doing so. Page 16 is the umbrella. This is going to give you an additional million dollars of coverage over all of your underlying limits. So it's, it's going to overlay the general liability, employee benefits, auto, public official and employment practice. So on the general liability, you had a 1 million, 3 million limit, you now have a 2 million, 4 million limit. Just kind of with a peace of mind that you do have that additional coverage.
So once the million, million dollars gets paid on any of the liability lines, the insurance company will not pay a nickel more than that. So this picks up the first dollar after that million dollars exhausted. It says self-insured retention here, $10,000, but that would only come into play if the claim was not covered in the first place. So you're, it's going to pick up your first dollar after the million dollars is spent. Say there's an auto fatality and your million dollars is exhausted, this will pick up the other extra million dollars.
Million dollars doesn't seem to go very far these days.
That's for sure.
Page 17 is the terrorism rescue grant act. Terrorism can be excluded on all lines of coverage except for the, your workers' compensation, which we don't currently insure that, but it can be excluded on all of these lines. So that's a choice for you guys. It's not included on the next page summary, so.
So this terrorism is very specific. It's not a punk or a hoodlum from Kane coming and pipe bombing you. This would be nationally declared by the President of the United States, the next ISIS, the next 9/11. They're saving up for that because they were ill-prepared for that event. So they're saving $452 off of you, me, everyone else to pay for the next big hit. You can decline that coverage. You're just saying, I reject the coverage and in the event that something happens and it's a declared terrorist attack, that you would not have that coverage.
You would not have coverage.
And then you would not have to pay that $452. And that's your prerogative either way.
And page 18 is the summary breakdown for National Fire. You do see a small increase there, however, it is due to the claims. I know that it wasn't not, not with National Fire, but since they keep increasing, it does throw a red flag to National Fire and it makes them hesitant. Now, I know that we've been in contact and I am glad that you guys called on the playground equipment. We do have somebody coming out Thursday. Was Chrissy, did they contact you?
Not yet.
Okay. Okay, because I talked to him yesterday and he said that he was going to be in contact. He will be out to do an inspection. We are going to work with McKee Risk and we're Um, we are going to work with McKee Risk and we're going to get some loss control services in place for this year.
Okay.
Um, they'll contact you, it's just whether it's different safety features that you guys can put in place, different things to prevent some, some ongoing losses.
Right.
You know, that might be easily preventable.
Right.
And I think that it would be a benefit to um, the township to do so.
And eventually, once, once the Seneca gets straightened out and closed and any other items that are sitting on your losses, making your premiums go up. Once we can get some loss control into play and help you guys in that regard, you will see your premiums in the future go down.
I know that.
We just need to get you guys straying, straying around.
Yeah. And we'll see what we can come up with, I mean, we can provide, do you guys currently have safety meetings? Any type of safety?
No.
Okay, so um, we'll work with you on that, I know that Cody came in and he helped you guys get an employee handbook together and stuff like that. So that's what we're gonna kind of work on, we're gonna get material out here to you guys to really take a look and um, you know, just see some places that you can make some changes. Okay?
That would be great.
Yeah. And I know um, McKee Risk, whenever I spoke with them and getting somebody out here for the playground equipment, they advised the same thing. So there is going to be um, you know, there's gonna be a cost to it, but I think it's gonna be worthwhile. It's gonna be worth your, your while.
I think so.
But when they come out, then when they come out and do the inspection on the playground, they will make recommendations, mandatory recommendations. And we have to abide by whatever the insurance carrier says at that time regarding the playground equipment.
Okay.
And we spoke to him before the meeting and he said he'd be at the playground inspection when that happened, so that would be good.
Do you guys have questions on any of the coverages or any additional questions for us on anything else that might be going on?
Excuse me.
Hi, how are you? Here's to nothing.
There was always.
Well, thank you for the presentation.
Thanks for having us.
Yeah, thanks for having us and we appreciate your time. When I get back to the office today, I'll make sure that somebody is, somebody should be in contact with you today.
Okay.
What time are you here?
I'm here till one thirty.
One thirty?
Yep.
Okay. That way, but they will definitely be coming on Thursday, so that they're in the area.
Okay, okay, alright.
Well, we appreciate your time, if you guys need anything, please feel free to give us a call.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You wanna take our picture?
Get used to it.
I got a question for you, what was the public official liability up to?
It is up to
My name is Sarah. Yeah, and my last name is S O R E K.
Eighty-nine, total paid.
Sixty-one, seventy-six.
No, that's the auto.
S O.
The public, it would be the public official. Oh, yeah, eighty-nine thousand. Eighty. Total paid, so far, do you want to just make a copy of this page? You got quarter?
Huh?
You got quarter? I'm at the meeting. Eighty-nine thousand, eighty-nine thousand seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents, that's total on card for Yeah, that's, they said it's gonna keep going up as long as we're in this lawsuit. That's the public official liability. Yeah. As long as we're in a lawsuit. Maybe if you just want to Now, leave this up here for everybody to look at it afterwards. They can't get my copy. Let's leave it there.
Okay, I'd like to open the meeting to public comment.
Man, I'd just like to comment on how good job the guys are doing on the berms and that and cleaning up afterwards and not taking two weeks, three weeks later to get it all swept and cleaned up. Good job.
Tell them you said so. Don't be getting after your
Some of the areas from the Highland Hotel, so to speak.
All, all needs.
And them two camps are flooded, flooded again.
I don't know what
Right above my house.
Alright.
The ones they had trouble with before, but they just need to drop a pipe in too, like what you're gonna do with me whenever you get around.
Yep, alright, uh. It's not mobile names, are they gonna get a pipe or, are they going to get a pipe?
I don't know, you would have to talk to them.
Yeah, I
Somehow, somebody's gonna have to. He got four-wheel drive stuck in his own driveway, but I think that's come, you, you recall the two uh, mobile homes that's across the street here?
Mm-hmm.
Well, they bring a third one in and they pour in his driveway and they, you know, break it down so that the water runs in it, he's not there. And they can't chase them off and by the time he gets there, they're gone.
Some, and it doesn't
But it, one camp gets flooded inside, the other one's just a four-wheel drive can get out.
Yeah. Who, uh-huh, who owns all the property out there, what the heck's his name?
That's private.
Oh, that's private, or them three campers?
Yeah, that's private too, yeah.
Okay.
Your friend out there would have had them off their bike out.
Oh, I know.
But it's, it's uh, it's an ongoing situation, it's been there for a few years and it's gotten worse since they opened it up from up above, but uh, it really isn't bad at my house, it's bad for those folks because the water's not getting to me as much as it was.
Right.
And uh, you know, it uh, it's gonna take some work out there.
Yeah, well, they're gonna be coming out and cleaning the ditches out with the backhoe all, all the way up through there.
That's what Tom said, he's, he's been working very diligently, I, I can't cite him, I just came in through Owlsness. And there's one spot with maybe four potholes and the rest of the road is
Yeah.
In really good shape and in the spring it was really hunky.
Oh, yeah.
As all of them.
Well, right, yeah, but they held up good this year.
But I think as a forestry, as I understand, it's gonna still Too, as far as maintenance and that will directly reduce a lot of the nonsense that's going on.
Right, all the timber sales that are out there now. So, okay. Anybody else?
The pre-working and ditches really, really, really changed them.
Makes a big difference.
Go off like night and day.
You know, water lays on them, it just makes mud.
Either that or it goes under.
Yep.
But it, it
Most of them are, what he's done with the grader are gonna be deeper with the backhoe, but for now
Well, he's gonna have to go deeper because
Yeah, you gotta keep
It's not gonna
Water from the frost needs to go somewhere, not on the road.
Water under.
Mm-hmm.
Which is what's happening up, going up there because in the place, the ditches are so full.
Yep.
Well, he'll be off.
Yeah, it's gonna take a while, it's a lot of work.
No problem, I understand. Blackberries are coming in good this year.
See, seems to me that there's gonna be a lot more this year than I've seen past.
You know, oh my god, I've never seen anything like that.
Yeah, they're everywhere.
Sorry.
So we might be able to increase the income into the township if we let them pick blackberries.
There you go. Start selling permits.
Yeah, sell permits.
Anybody else have a comment?
Man.
Okay, public comment.
I'm sorry.
Moving on to new business, we have to discuss filing complaint with the disciplinary board. Which is actually talked about at uh, our executive session.
May twenty-second, I think it was.
On May twenty-second?
Always um I don't know.
It was Thursday.
Where am I, May? Monday, it was a Monday. Yeah. Out loud, I don't look, I can't, I wrote it down in my calendar. Yeah, it was the twenty-second. It was the twenty-second.
Okay, so
What is, or is uh, filing a report with the state disciplinary board against Saldaf. Um, they're rep, basically, they were used to represent us and we got rid of them. And then they went and represented home rule charter and basically, they're not allowed to do that, so we're filing a letter with the disciplinary board, the state. And uh, I'll make a motion that we do that.
I'll second that motion.
Motion carried. I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Wait, why would you try to hurt Saldaf when all they've done is help the community?
I'm really not liberty to comment on that.
Didn't spend all the money fighting the community, what they want, we'd have more money.
Yeah.
I'll second your motion to adjourn the meeting. I gotta go to work.